This time I'd like to call the Monday, February 15th, 2021 council meeting to order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with the great justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. All right. At this time, I've got the honor of swearing in publicly our new city manager. Hope you'll join me down at the podium here.
This is my wonderful wife, Laura, my better half.
Laura, nice to meet you.
Soon to be resident of Vandelia. This, of course, is a part of them, our two and a half year old, Mrs. Forrest, our six month old himself. They're very excited, future of our city.
All right.
I, Dan Went, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and the State of Ohio, that I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinance of the City of Vandelia and will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Manager and Clerk of Council. And will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Manager and Clerk of Council. Congratulations. Sorry about that. You know everybody's money, I'm paying you back.
Yeah, nice.
Enjoy it while it lasts, because it goes quick. Okay, next we'll move on to approval of the previous minutes from previous meeting minute, or the previous meeting minutes. We have the council study session minutes of January 19th, 2021, the council meeting minutes of January 19th, 2021. Are there any comments or corrections? Being none, they stand approved. We have no communications, petitions, or awards, nor do we have any public hearing. And that brings us to comments from interested citizens. If anyone would like to make a comment, please state your name and address for our record and your comment. Being none, I'll move on to the city manager's report. We have no information items, however, we do have an action item. Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would respectfully request direction under action item number one with regard to 251 North Dixie Drive, and it regards the provision of utility water service specifically to a property that's outside of the corporate limits, and just look for direction on how council would like to proceed.
Okay. I have a motion.
I move that we do not provide water service to 251 North Dixie Drive.
I didn't hear that. She, her motion said not provide.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Forrest and a second by Councilman Lewis that we do not supply water service outside the corporate limits. Are there any comments for this time?
Well, Your Honor, I'll try to explain my position here. First, I feel that I want to be consistent in what I've done over the last several years, and that has been to oppose development that does anything to exacerbate the truck traffic within the city of Vandelia. I would note, I believe Dayton has also been consistent in some of their activities. First, we didn't want the development in such a close proximity to the city of Vandelia, and that desire was ignored. Second, we did not want or offered in exchange for certain items not to maintain the airport access road, which is principally to service the airport and its environs there. The city of Dayton had no interest in that. Thus, the citizens of Vandelia bear that expense. Third, the city of Dayton has not moved in a direction to help the citizens of Vandelia unless and until we put enormous pressure on them. I believe that they've pledged to assist in helping us legislate, but a prohibition against the truck traffic, yet, over the last several years, nothing in that direction has manifested itself. I am aware that, one, the development will still go forward, two, that the city's primary function is to provide service to its citizens, but in this case, they're outside the city. We don't derive any income tax revenue, which is the principal driver to what we do, and the city of Dayton went out of its way to develop water service and sewer service at great expense to terminate the provision of those services by Vandelia, knowing directly that it was going to impact us financially in a negative manner. So they went ahead and spent more money than they were going to get a return on, knowing that it was going to impact the citizens negatively. And the last comment I have is that in the development of this, and I do feel for the developer, certainly provisions would have been made in the contracting or the lease of that property that water service was available. Apparently, that supposition was incorrect, and I don't think that that's necessarily incumbent upon us to provide that service. And for those reasons, I'm choosing to vote no.
Or yes, with the way the motion was presented?
I choose to vote yes on the negative vote.
Thank you. I have a comment. David, thank you for being so eloquent.
Please try to speak up, Candace.
I'm sorry. Oh.
Well, now we can't hear you at all.
You're muted.
You're muted.
Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you, David, for being so eloquent there, but another thing we need to realize is that, you know, Dayton is responsible for their development. They've not, they're not being a good partner with this developer. That needs to be recognized to anybody who chooses to partner with Dayton in the future. So I think us enabling them to walk away from their responsibility is not a positive thing, in addition to all the things that David mentioned. That's it. Thank you.
I guess I want to start with a question for the council members that have been on council for years. Historically, when was the last time that council as a body or council directed city management to revisit any of the historical issues with the city of Dayton? I mean, you brought up the airport access road, but I guess my question is, is when have we last had conversations with Dayton City Commission or city management regarding any of these issues that apparently the majority of council still has a very bad taste in their mouth for our neighbors and is driving a lot of these decisions as we move forward? I mean, historically, where are we at? I mean, is it 10 years ago? Is it?
Five years ago.
Five years ago? And?
I think that's a fair assumption, and I believe because of the anomaly that the city of, or the city of Dayton's airport is, meaning that we have a, we have a non-contiguous area in the city with no residents that can zone and build unfettered and unabated, but that in itself is the issue. Now, to answer your question, I think Mr. Blakesley, Councilman Blakesley is correct. It's been about five years, and to my discredit, I don't know, the previous city manager was to have reached out on a number of these issues to the city, and we were led to believe that there was no, how do I want to articulate, no interaction or movement on any of those issues.
I think that's a good analogy, is, whether it's a good word, is movement. We've had dialogue and from city manager to city manager, there had been dialogue. We had directed the city manager on our behalf to talk to Dayton City Management one-on-one and convey some of our concerns, and consistently between their council and commission and so forth, the word would come back that seemed as if there was no movement, and I think that's the word. Basically, you know, they were going to continue to do what they thought that they were, what they had planned. That was the message that was conveyed to us in the past five years, maybe not in the past year, but up to about last year. I think it all started when we were negotiating with the firehouse. So there were a lot of things that basically were stonewalled, and I don't recall any positive things coming out of that through discussions. Now, should we have maybe sat down with their commission, our commission, or our council? Could that have made an effect or a difference? I don't know. But to your point, there has been dialogue through the last at least three years when we kind of heard this project coming along. So I think that's.
I guess, I mean, and I have a feeling I know where tonight's action item is going to go, but I think as a council, we need to reevaluate our approach to this, because the Dayton Airport property is going to be developed, and there's nothing that the city of Vandelia can do to change that. And I think that, and I've heard several times, people say that Dayton's not good neighbors, Dayton's not a good neighbor, but I think it goes both ways, and I don't think that denying this developer access to our water system in any way, shape, or form affects the city of Dayton. It doesn't. The city of Dayton wants them to be a customer. That was their position all along, and they're probably going to get that, and it's going to cost this developer a lot of money to do that. A developer who I think the city of, who I feel the city has worked well with the city of Vandelia, based on the agreement that we had in place with the city of Dayton, I feel the developer has bent over backwards to assist us in making sure some of the stuff that we wanted done is being done, to try to mitigate that development as much as possible to impact the city. But the only person that's going to suffer from this is that developer, and a developer who may, at some point in the future, want to do business in Vandelia, and that's just going to leave a bad taste in that developer's mouth for the city of Vandelia. I think we need to start looking at, and I think if it's a subset of council reaching out to Dayton City Commission or directing the city manager to do so, but I think we need to start looking and having some dialogue with Dayton, because the reality is, is that this development out by the airport, everybody is on board behind it. County, the city of Dayton, the city of Union, Vandelia Butler City Schools, the Transportation Improvement District, everyone's on board to what's going on out there. And then there's Vandelia, and I think that we are going to start to suffer at, in the eyes of development and potential development, if we don't start to approach this more from a regional aspect, because I think we're going to start to get the reputation that we're trying to do our own thing, and it's going to hurt us in the long run. Now, I don't discredit some of Dave's points or Councilman Lewis's points, but I think we need to revisit some of these discussions, especially the airport access road, because I think things have changed since that airport access road conversation was had. I mean, I don't think the city of Dayton can say that they're not benefiting from the airport access road now, especially if that's where we want them to, you know, we want them to take over a shared maintenance or maintenance altogether or whatever, but once all this development builds out at the airport, that airport access road obviously is going to benefit that development even more than it has 10, 15 years ago, when it wasn't developed. So I think, I just don't, I don't, I mean, I understand some of the points that were made, but I don't believe that, for lack of a better term, punishing, you know, and we've, punishing this developer for their reasonable request, because it's not going to change the development, and we've extended water service to other customers outside the corporate limits before. We have it in our ordinances to allow for this. We would make profit off of it, which would go into a water fund, which we need additional money in the water fund to help fund infrastructure projects coming down the road. And if that can be done off the back of city of Dayton customers, then I'm all for that. I don't see the negative to that, because this decision tonight is, by turning down this request, is in no way, shape, or form going to stop this development from happening. It's just going to cost the developer more money to make it happen. So that's all I have. Thank you.
And I'd just like to say as well that I had a discussion with the former Dayton police chief, or not police chief, fire chief, this week, and brought up some of these points to him, and he thought probably the roadblock was coming from city management rather than council in Dayton. He also said that he'd worked with Chief Folick on numerous occasions with sharing situations and how, what a great relationship they had, and spoke highly of the way that they work with us. So it's not in every area that Dayton treats us this way. I do feel like the developer is going to get the punishment, and what, from what Cory says, you know, that cuts his future ability to, and he has expressly said that he's developing more properties around this area, and I hate to see him have a negative opinion of the city of Vandelia. It's, development's going to be there no matter what. If we can make profit on that water, I don't, I don't think it's punishing Dayton at all. They don't care. So I guess I'm thinking that we should probably go ahead and let them do that.
Dayton's going to run the water to that building regardless of what we do.
Well, I think they have to provide for the fire line, and I don't disagree with what both of you said in terms, I mean, it is somewhat of a parochial view on my own behalf of what I just, what I just conveyed. However, I still feel compelled to vote no, and principally because I think it's in typical to the positions I've taken all along. I would also add that I concur with Mr. Folick, that Councilman Folick, that we should, we should make, reach out to the city of Dayton in some form or another to try to collaborate on existing issues and other issues moving forward in a real overt, overt way, and I certainly can't, some dialogue or increased dialogue of any sort would be better than what we've enjoyed the last 20 years.
I'd agree with that, and Councilman Folick is right that, you know, it's not, what we do tonight is not going to stop any of the development. I don't think that was really part of the issue that some of us have objected to. Dayton will run the water to them eventually, and I believe it was even mentioned that this could be temporary. I don't know that it was going to even really be permanent. So, you know, to that end, I'm not sure what, I agree too that it's unfortunate that it's the developer that gets, you know, punished on this, and it's not our intent or not my intent to do that, although it may look that way. I'm not sure in the best interest of our city. I agree that, you know, we need to open the dialogue again and maybe start over.
If, if I may, the, I will let council know that.
I'm going to say that I, you know, I won't accept the word punishment. Dayton needs to take responsibility for their development. We do not need to accept that. We were just in negotiations with the city of Dayton not very long ago, and so we had, we got the same response from them. So could our council sit down with them? Certainly. Would we be open to that? I'm sure we would be, but in the past, that has had, we haven't had any effect on their decisions.
You know, I think that it was several years ago when all this development started, we offered city of Dayton, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we offered city of Dayton fire, police, water, we offered the whole works to them, and they just said, no, they're going to go alone. Well, let them go alone then.
Well, they used us, when they, they used us when it was to their benefit, and then they brought the water over there for their benefit. There's been so many things over the years, but, you know, I'm not looking at it as a punishment. It's their responsibility, they need to deal with it. That's, that's how I look at it.
And when you say they used us to their benefit, because we provided water and sewer to them until they extended services there, is that what we're talking about?
Right.
That's a question I don't know.
They want to be autonomous, and they have city and they have water services, and so, and they want to develop that and probably control it. So it, I'm not saying that it doesn't make sense, but because it makes sense to them because it didn't help us, and they knew that, and they still went forward with it. It was a unilateral decision. It certainly wasn't a bilateral decision, or we did, were not participative in offering further services, and indeed, we had offered, and we had, I believe, we've had some kind of a water agreement to provide water services to the airport that has precedes all of us by a number of years.
I don't think that, I have a problem, I don't understand why if, because the city of Dayton invested infrastructure improvements to get water and sewer to the airport, more than likely because they had development plans at the airport, why that makes it that they used us for years, it's just the water and sewer was available to them, and we're talking back when the airport started, back in the 60s. I mean, the city of Vandelia.
20s.
Well, but I mean, the agreement that I saw from the original water agreement was like in the 60s, so, you know, we provided water and sewer to the airport, you know, from the 60s on, because the infrastructure wasn't there, and then, you know, Dayton made a business decision to extend that to the airport. I don't necessarily see how that equates to them taking advantage of us. I mean, we would be the same way if, if we were dependent.
I didn't.
If we were dependent on.
I didn't use that word, take advantage. I said they used us when it was appropriate for them, and they could care less if they could get, if they could provide the water and the pressure to this development. There would have been no conversation, as a matter of fact, it wasn't from Dayton to us, it was from the developer to us. So we didn't hear Dayton, you know, asking us if they could make a deal with us.
Right, because Dayton wants to provide the water.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that'd be the same of, like, our businesses and residents south of 70, that we depend on the county system to provide water to those businesses and residents, and then, and if a council in the future decided to extend, and I understand there are some other challenges there, but if we wanted to extend our own water and sewer services south of 70, that would be like Montgomery County being mad at us for taking advantage or using them for years of water service when we're just providing the services to our residents, because it's, the infrastructure's already there, and it's not financially advantageous for somebody to do it at that point in time. But I would think that if the city of Vandelia had a large amount of property south of 70 that was developable, we would probably be considering an option of extending city services south and bringing that on all of our infrastructure versus depending on another government body.
The, I think from the city manager's office, there's clear direction in reaching out and collaborating, having discussions with Dayton about where there might be opportunities to work together, and that's well received. I would just point out that since coming on board, I've worked and had several conversations with Deputy City Manager Parlet, and that actually I'll be speaking with him tomorrow, and I'll bring up that idea of looking for other topics in which we can proactively collaborate.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Ayers, I believe you were going to make a comment earlier. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
No. I mean, it's been a good discussion. I mean, it's not like we've sat back and just taken everything Dayton has thrown our way. There has been, although we haven't had council-to-council conversations, but through our city management, we have interacted and had dialogue with their city management over a lot of these issues. And so we just haven't been set back, be entitled about it, but it's going to be developed. It's, it's, and they're told right to do that, and, and that's fine. We've asked for infrastructure, roadways improvements with all the development to have that done in advance of the warehouse, building going on one after another, and, you know, their issue, yeah, it had to come in the future, it had to come in the future. So we've had, we've had plenty of dialogue with the city of Dayton, and I understand their position. They got land that's going to benefit them. It's unfortunate, it doesn't benefit Vandelia. That's the way it is. So I'm voting no.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? You call the roll?
A reminder to council, this is a motion not to approve. Councilmember Folick?
No.
Councilmember Forrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
No.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries 5-2. We have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of this evening, and that's Resolution 21R-09. Mr. McDonald, by title only?
A resolution.
A resolution authorizing the agreement with Business First for a greater, excuse me, for a Greater Dayton Regional Business Retention and Expansion Program.
Thank you, Mr. Wynn.
Vandelia has been participating in the Business First Retention and Expansion Program since 2002, under the terms of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the participating jurisdictions. The county is requesting approval of a five-year renewal agreement through December 31, 2025. The purpose of the program is to support the growth and retention of local businesses by identifying their needs and providing information and resources to fulfill those needs. The program also promotes communication and cooperation between economic development entities participating in the program. The annual cost to participate in the Business First Program is $1,500.
Thank you. Do you have a motion? I'll move to approve Resolution 21R-09.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Folick, and a second by, I believe, Councilman Lewis, that we approve Resolution 21-R-09. Are there any comments? Call the roll?
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 21-R-10. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution waiving the formal bidding requirement and authorizing certain services from the Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab for laboratory and AFIS assessments for the 2021 calendar year.
Thank you, Mr. Wynn.
The Vandelia Police Division has utilized the services of Miami Valley Regional Crime Laboratory for more than 40 years. Said services include laboratory analysis in all scientific sections, supplies for the department's evidence technicians, and attendance by three officers at the MVRCL Evidence Technician Course. The proposed annual fee for 2021 is $25,351. This represents an 8.5% decrease from the 2020 rate. The 2021 budget for this contract is $32,665.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 21R-10.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley, and a second by Vice Mayor Ayers, that we approve Resolution 21R-10. Are there any comments? Call the roll?
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. We have no ordinances in their first reading, however, we do have a couple of ordinances in their second reading, the first one being Ordinance 21-03. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance rezoning 5.15 acres of vacant land at the dead end of Walt Smith Way from residential two-family and residential four-family to residential single-family three, and amending the zoning map of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Wynn.
You'll recall that Jamar Investments Incorporated has requested the rezoning of 5.15 acres of land at 675 Walt Smith Way, from residential two-family and residential four-family to residential single-family three, or RSF3. The purpose of this rezoning request is to allow construction of one single-family home. The property in question meets all applicable standards of the RSF3 zoning district. The Planning Commission reviewed this request at its January 12, 2021 meeting, and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval.
Thank you. Since this is an ordinance in a second reading, I will open up a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please state your name and address for our record, and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
Yes, Your Honor, I move that we approve Ordinance 21-03.
Second? I have a motion by Councilwoman Woods, and a second by Councilman Folick, that we approve Ordinance 21-03 in its second reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll?
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Ordinance 21-04. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance amending Section 67809 of the Vandelia Codified Ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Wynn.
This ordinance cleans up language in the Section 67809, and adds additional discharge language that was inadvertently left out when this ordinance was amended in 2019.
Thank you. Since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I will open up a public hearing. If anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion? Your Honor, I'll move to approve Ordinance 21-04 in the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick, and a second by Councilman Blakesley, that we approve Ordinance 21-04 in its second reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll?
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Emergency Ordinance 21-05. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance approving individual assessment amounts and directing the Finance Director or her designee to certify the amounts to the county auditor for collection and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Wynn.
This emergency ordinance assesses properties for delinquent accounts relating to stormwater fees, trash, collection, property cleanup, and weed cutting.
Thank you. Since this is an emergency ordinance, I will open up a public hearing, so if anyone would like to make comment on this ordinance, please state your name and address for our record, and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Ordinance 21-05 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley, and a second by Councilwoman Woods, that we approve Ordinance 21-05 as an emergency. Are there any comments? Call the roll?
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
No. Councilman Lewis, yes.
Oh. It's true, I don't know where that even came from. Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Governor Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers? Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we'll move on to reports from boards and commissions. Council, you've had an opportunity to review the Vandelia Development Corporation meeting minutes of November 19, 2020, the Vandelia Development Corporation meeting draft minutes of December 16, 2020. Are there any comments? Being none, they stand approved. Next, we have the bill listing in the amount of $3,273,219.73, and the January purchasing card detail in the amount of $19,419.85. And that brings us to council comments, and we'll begin with Mr. McDonald. Thank you. Mr. Wynn?
I just have two brief items, Your Honor. I'd like to inform council that Mr. Dave Heckler, General Manager at the Tri-Cities North Regional Waste Water Authority, has announced his retirement in May 2021. The board, I attended the meeting, accepted his resignation, and so we'll begin to, we'll begin that recruitment, and I'll update council as it becomes relevant. The other thing that I would bring up to you, just for your information, we received correspondence from Mr. Steve Stanley, the Executive Director of the Montgomery County TID, regarding the first phase of construction with the US 40 Improvement Project. Mr. Stanley indicated that it was necessary to close the two ramps to the Dayton International Airport on the north side of National Road. We've heard that the two ramps on the south side of National Road will remain open throughout the project. The detour will direct traffic from National Road to Concord Drive, and eventually over to Terminal Drive, and we've enclosed that letter. I don't know if Mr. Cron might have any sort of update with regard to that? That's it so far. We'll let you know as we hear more, so that you're aware of how that affects traffic.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Folick? Just a couple of things. First, I know the Fire Division had, over the past week or so, on social media, recognized, because of COVID, they didn't do their annual awards dinner, and back around the Christmas holiday, so they've been recognizing their personnel for their achievements in 2020. So those, there was a whole series of them, a lot of unit citations and letters of commendation that different employees have received, so I would encourage people to check that out. The two I want to highlight are Matt Uker, who was selected as the EMS Person of the Year, and Maya Mitchell, who was selected as the Firefighter of the Year. So those two employees were recognized for their service last year. Also, I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Beau Townsend for his 45, 45th anniversary of business ownership here in Vandalia, from starting Beau Townsend Ford to growing that business to what it is today, which includes Lincoln and Nissan dealerships. I think everyone knows that the Townsend family have been huge, and the business has been huge supporters of the community over the years, so I'm glad that Vandalia has benefited from that business here in town, and thank him for his continued support. And then just, again, because I know public works crews are out there battling it again tonight, but this past weekend, and probably the rest of this week, is going to be a rough week for them, so we appreciate all their efforts, because I think, again, this morning, our streets looked great, and I'm sure they will look great tomorrow morning, too. Thank you. All right, thank you. Councilwoman Farce?
I'm sorry, Bob texted me that I'm on a five-minute delay. I apologize. I'm in a little town-
We've moved on, Councilwoman Farce. No, go ahead.
All right, never mind. I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Blakesley?
Thank goodness. Go ahead.
The only thing I have is echo with the Service Department, obviously, for helping out with the weather and keeping our streets clear and safe for us to travel, but also, over the weekend, witnessed a water main break, and my heart always goes out to the guys that are down in the pit trying to fix the water, water main and patch it, and many times they're up to their knees in cold water, and I wanted to run home and get a pot of coffee and bring it back to them, but by that time, they were about done, so, but that's a thankless job as much as anything, and the dedication and, you know, to actually do that, I can, I can feel for them. So I just wanted to let them know, we appreciate them and the weather. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Woods?
Nothing tonight.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
I'm fine, thank you.
All right. And the only thing I have is, I'd like to thank our Vandelia Butler School Superintendent, Mr. O'Leary, for giving Mr. Wynn a tour of our district. He went through all the facilities, and I think, again, that's just another example of how well our city works with our school system and the township, and, you know, I appreciate his efforts, and, you know, it's part of building that relationship, and it looks like you're off to a good start. Appreciate that.
I will tell you that at Demet Elementary, I met a young man who was also Wrestler of the Week, and he told me that he was the future mayor of Vandelia, so no, no pressure, but he's coming for you.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I have, so we will adjourn this meeting and reconvene the study session.